Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Victoria Planning Commission meeting for August 15, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Meredith, would you please call Row?
Dan McAlinkah.
Present.
Derek Hunt.
Present.
Victor Mendoza.
Present.
David Brown.
Present.
Cynthia Staley.
Present.
Rebecca Spears. Brian O'Gin.
Present.
Monica Rodriguez.
Present.
Thank you. Looks like we have quorum today. All right. Next thing on the agenda is communications. Just want to let everybody know tonight's meeting is being simulcast via TV 15, so it will be on showing to the public. Also, the next thing is citizens communication. Anyone wishing to speak on items only not listed for Republicans can do so at this time. It looks like we have one person, Mr. Michael Von der On.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Von der On. I live at 2204 East North Street. I just wanted to thank three people. One is Attorney Adam West and Gordon Freeze. He's the felony prosecutor for the District Attorney's Office. And Rick Madrid, they've been helping with the trailer park where we live. It appears the owner of the trailer park is just dragging his feet, you know, into getting it done. And it's a safety issue. And my mom had fell and hurt herself pretty bad because of all the debris there. And Rick Madrid, he calls like the trailer park owner or the general manager and gets things done. And they do get done when he's calls them and stuff, but when he's off like today, sometimes nothing gets done. So I appreciate him being an advocate for it. And you know, there's a problem with affordable housing. And you say, well, why don't you move? Well, I'm paying 410 a month lot fee. And, you know, I have my own trailer house and it costs like $1,500 a month to get, you know, a decent place, you know, that's halfway safe. And I also want to congratulate the SWAT team. They made a drug bust on September 22nd. And they just prosecuted the person on August the 6th. And he's in the Victoria County Jail and he's waiting to get sentenced to Texas Department of Criminal Justice prison. And ever since he got arrested, it's been a lot more peaceful. And the Special Crimes Unit also busted the trailer park manager in 2019 three times. So you can understand why I don't trust management very much. They used that ramrod to break the door down. And every since those two gentlemen have been arrested, it's been a lot safer. And they got kids, you know, living in there too, which that's not very safe for them. But I do appreciate the time and effort everyone's helping. And I don't talk to the trailer park owner directly because he had threatened to evict me when I talked to him. If I hurt his feelings or say the wrong thing, he gets really upset. So that's why there's people like Rick Madrid that talks to him on my behalf and everything. But I would like the process speeded up to get it fixed and all that stuff. Because I do pay my 410 lot fee and I deserve service. And it'd be like you go to Taco Bell and you pay 10 bucks for four tacos and they only give you two tacos. Or they'll say, well, we can't give you tacos for 30 days and you won't like your tacos now. So, you know, I would like for the trailer park owner to, you know, speed it up. I don't want to say he's dragging his feet. I did say allegedly dragging his feet. And I know he owns 14 other trailer parks too and everything, but I do appreciate the plumbers doing their job. Thanks and for listening and have a good evening. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
If there's not anyone else, I would go ahead and go ahead and close this citizen communication public hearing. We'll go ahead and to the development items with the public hearings. And our first item on the agenda is a variance request from the, for the original town site re-subdivision number 101. May we have the report?
Good evening, Commissioners. The subject property is located at 307 West Water Street. The subject property was previously plotted as Block 76, Lots 1 through 4 in the original town site of Victoria. It has long been developed as Anchor Lumber Yard. The property owner is wishing to re-subdivide the property into two commercial lots. The owner is requesting a variance in order to replot the property into one commercial retail lot and one commercial office lot, with the office lot being below the minimum standards. The lot that is Lot 2R is being proposed would have a total lot area of 1,591 square feet, with a lot width of 86.99 feet with an approximate depth of 18 feet. The minimum, these are all below the minimum requirements for a commercial lot. Lot 2 is also proposing to reduce all the setbacks to five feet. The original town site re-subdivision number 101 final plat is a final plat of 1.77 acres. The property is being plotted into two commercial lots contained within Block 76, Lots 1 and 2R. The proposed plat will dedicate 2.2 feet of right-of-way for the future expansion of two local streets of West Third Street and South Glass Street. The proposed plat will also dedicate a 15-foot drainage and utility easement along West Water Street. The final plat will meet all the applicable ordinances with the approval of the variance. Staff is recommending the approval of the variance to allow for the replat of a commercial office lot below all the minimum requirements for an office lot. The Victoria Preservation, Inc. had reached out to the developer and owner to request if they would be willing to preserve the original Anchor Lumber building built in 1941. It is classified as a high-priority preservation structure within the Historic Research Survey of Victoria, Texas commissioned in 1984. In good efforts to preserve this high-priority structure, the developer and owner have decided they would like to plot out the existing historic structure and gift this structure to the Victoria Preservation, Inc. Staff has determined the approval of this variance would not significantly change the existing character of the neighborhood and would not be detrimental to the surrounding lots. Staff has also determined that the approval of this variance will allow for the preservation of this high-priority structure. The property lies just out of the current original town site historic district. However, it was a part of the original town site subdivision. This area south of Water Street was originally reclassified in order to allow for the placement of manufactured homes in the area. Because this lot is located just outside of the original town site historic district, staff does not find any issues for the historic building to be preserved and contained on an individual lot for this commercial office use. Staff is also recommending the approval of the final plat of the original town site re-subdivision number 101, conditioned upon the approval of the variance. I'm open for any questions.
I also want to add that through further research, the 1941 date is what was found in the County Appraisal District, but further research indicates the building was actually probably built around, somewhere around 1911. So there's some different dates out there, but it is definitely a high-priority historic structure in our community. And if it was across the street in the historic district where there was, there's a lot greater lot size flexibility, the variances wouldn't be so great.
I just have a curiosity question because we saw about historical. So is a historical marketplace out for it?
It does not. So the city of Victoria does not have any, our historic districts are very limited in what they actually do. A lot of it is, it's really, if you're in a historic district, manufactured homes are prohibited, which is why the original town site stops at Water because of the prevalence of manufactured homes south of Water. And it does not allow billboards or electronic signs. But it does not have a National Register designation or a state-recorded historic or any other type of designation, but it is eligible if a property owner in the future wants to apply to one of those designations. It's eligible just on the architecture and age alone.
Thank you.
If there's no questions of the team now, I'd like to go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this side, please come forward at this time and please limit yourself to three minutes. Okay. Looks like we don't have anybody. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And do we have any further discussion from the team? I think I, I think what I'd like to ask a couple of questions. I thought we'd have somebody talk about it. The Preservation Society will be given that building by the landowner?
Yes.
And the, are there plans, you say, they say, you say office. What kind of, for my curiosity, are the Victorian, are the Preservation Society going to bring offices there? Whether it's their own offices or is it going to be some type of commercial office where they could generate some income? I mean, I just.
I mean, none of those plans are, I think, solidified in what their actual end use is, but whether it's a commercial office or a Victoria or a nonprofit office, it is suitable. I mean, it's been Anchor Lumber's office building for many years. So that's, we look at what, what would be, the use be? And the use is currently office and it would be suitable for a future for office.
Yeah, I drove, I drove out there and looked at it. Well, you know, I grew up on that side of town in the early 60s. So I was in that building when, before they had the newer section. So it's been there a good while, so I understand that. Any? If, is it all right though?
You can open back up.
Okay, I want to reopen up the public hearing. That's why I wanted to make sure.
Thank you. I'm here. My name is Alfredo Deluna. I've lived here in Victoria a long time. I moved to Houston now. I'm here representing Jim Delion's family, my father-in-law. He owned the property at 307 West Third, property right, right behind it. Maybe you knew him as, as the renowned artist from here in Victoria. Well, that's where his shop was. That's where he created a lot of his famous artwork. My wife got the letter. Her brother got a letter concerning the variance. And I think the only question we might have is this, does this, does this impact his property at all? Whether street drainage or street improvements as far as West Third, 307, 307 West Third? Is that going to, is anything going to be impacted? We just came because we thought maybe there's an issue with maybe with the, that we might want to answer a question or ask a question, but is this going to impact that property at all?
No.
Right behind.
No. So the remainder of the property, the rest of the lot meets all applicable regulations. And that's really not what the variance is for. The variance is to carve out the anchor lumber. But a Dollar General market is proposed to go on the rest of the lot. And so there is detention and drainage requirements that are in place. And so they have met all of the engineering requirements of the city of Victoria.
That would impact his property or?
No, no, as far as drainage, the code does not allow post-development, the post-development, the drainage after development to exceed what was running off pre-development.
And would this include, would the purchasers, the owners of this property, would they have to be making any improvements to West Third there? Because right now it's just kind of a gravel road. Is that, I mean, I guess it wouldn't make us any remind if they're going to do that.
They're not required, but I don't know if they voluntarily are. I know they're dedicating some additional land. But their driveway is, their primary driveway is off of Water Street.
So if it's going to be on glass or water, so there would be egress as far as West Third on the south side then?
Um.
The driveway is going, sorry, let me get here. I don't have a mic. So the driveway, we are fixing it to kind of bring that as our next item. The driveway is going off of West Water and that is the only in and out from there based on the drainage pond and such they're doing for detention. So it shouldn't affect Glass Street at all. They are doing the proposed right-of-way dedication that's required. However, right now there are no plans as far as future expansion or improving the road as of yet, since their main entrance is going to be there off of West Water.
All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll have another public hearing for that part. If you have something else you want, because you'll see some more stuff on the screen. All right. So the public hearing's closed. No more questions for the, for the staff?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to approve the variance as stated by our staff. And I have a, by Mr. Derek, Dr. Derek Hunt, and a second by David Brown?
No.
Oh, was you? Okay, I apologize. By Mr. Vic Mendoza. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Variance passes. All right. We'll go to our second item on, is a variance request for a driveway variance for Dollar General. May I have the staff report, please?
Yes. So in order to redevelop the property, the owner is required to submit a site plan for approval before any building plans or building permits may be issued. The applicant is requesting a variance in order to reduce the minimum distance required of the driveways intersecting public streets. The driveway is being proposed off of West Water Street, a secondary arterial, which requires a minimum to be set 75 feet from the intersection of South Glass Street. The site plan is proposing the driveway with a 30-foot distance from the intersection right-of-way lines of West Water and Glass Street. Due to the entrance, interest of preserving the high-priority historic structure and meeting drainage and detention requirements, the developer has some constraints on where the driveway can be placed. The existing historic structure encroaches into the current right-of-way along West Water Street, which could obstruct the view of drivers trying to enter or exit the site if the driveway was placed closer to the structure, just to gain the distance from the intersection. Staff has determined the approval of this variance would not significantly change the existing character of the neighborhood and would not be detrimental to those surrounding lots. They have determined the approval of the variance would allow for that preservation of that high-priority historic structure to remain a part of Victoria's longtime history. I'm open for any questions on this.
So just as note, there is a proposed sidewalk on South Glass Street and then of course on Moody Street. The other two frontages of Moody and South Third, there's not a sidewalk proposed because there's really just not a lot of development back there. And so that sidewalk on Glass Street will of course also help pedestrians. But the overall reason we're recommending approval is there's very little traffic that goes on South Glass Street. It's a local street, so we don't believe there to be conflicts.
Did they do, they, did they do a study on the, on the traffic on that road, the city?
We have traffic counts.
Okay, so you, all right, very good.
Yeah, Water Street is a lot more trafficked, but it's still a very low-traffic collector.
But when we look at this and wherever we're doing projection-wise and they're building a Dollar General there, wouldn't that increase the traffic flow on that?
It's going to increase it to that driveway, but you know, there won't be conflicts with that driveway and a lot of other traffic. That's going to be the traffic generator.
The original driveway also was set closer to the building, but the way it used to come in and out, they used to flow out onto Glass Street. But because the detention requirements for Dollar General, they are no longer able to exit off of Glass. That's why they're suggesting to move it and to move it away from that building, the way the existing one originally functioned.
And as you get farther south too, it's mixed use down there, but definitely a lot more residential. And so we'd also like to keep the Dollar General traffic off of Glass Street.
Any more questions of the team? Now I'm going to go ahead and open it up to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. Evening.
Good evening. This is my first public meeting. I have a, my name is Sylvia Castillo. And I do have property at 204 West Water Street, which is basically catty-corner almost from Anchor Lumber Yard. And I live on 105 West Water. West Water is, has a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic at 6:00 in the morning, the 5:00 traffic, the light right there by Moody and, I mean, Mumus and, what is it, Mumus and Our Church, Our Lady of Sorrows. There is definitely, there is a lot of traffic. There is a lot of fast traffic too. We hear it. I live on Water Street. There's a lot of traffic there. So that is one of my concerns. If we do get a Dollar General, I, there will be a lot more traffic. Maybe we can have, I don't know what we can do because I'm just scared there might be a lot of more accidents there if we get more traffic there. Right now that it is a lumberyard, I don't see that much traffic in and out. And I also go to Our Lady of Sorrows. There's pretty much traffic there and it's congested at our masses on Sunday mornings as well. So I think maybe we do need a study or something as far as the traffic. And then my other question was, but I think it was answered with the other gentleman, the drainage. Because again, it is right there on Water Street. And on, across the street, we don't have sidewalks either. Right there with the old Rosita Bakery in that area, there is no sidewalks either there. So if we would get a sidewalk, I mean, could we just upgrade the whole block? You know, just something.
Maybe we get the, maybe we get the aerial map back up, please.
I'm not sure. I know I can't see from way back there. I'm not sure where he's, where the proposed entrance would be. You said Water Street? I just think maybe a little bit more study with the traffic. And then Dollar General would create more traffic, I believe, especially on the weekends.
So if the property owner were to demolish the Anchor Lumber Building and place the driveway in the middle of the block, that would meet all of the requirements without a variance. Shifting it over, I guess it's probably about 20 feet closer to Glass Street, it also gets it farther away from the Moody and Water Street intersection, which, and then also gets it farther away from the existing Anchor Lumber Building that's trying to be preserved. So it does increase the stacking capabilities and not having a conflict near the intersection. And it also allows the preservation of that building and allows for a greater sight view. Whereas if you had it right up against the building, the building could kind of interfere. So that's, those reasons are for why we're recommending approval. Because if you were to move it closer to the center, even though that does meet code with zero variances, it's really not the best location for it.
You're getting right in the middle of that, where the people would be lining up at the light, where you push it over further. You probably helped yourself by doing it this way. That's what it looks like to me.
But this does necessitate a variance and the driveway being placed in the middle, which as you said, is not as ideal, does not require a variance. So they would be allowed to pull a permit without any sort of greater review.
I have a quick question and I think I know the answer. But on the corner or the intersection of Glass and Water Street, that's just a two-way stop. It's not a four-way stop, correct?
Correct.
So therefore traffic can flow pretty easily.
Is, is that all? Thank you. Thank you very much. So is anyone else from, okay, so I'm going to go ahead and go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll go ahead and do a further discussion.
So he brought something up interesting, dealing with the stop sign. And so I know we don't know what the future can predict or what the, how the traffic would be in there. I believe, I agree with you. I believe you did the safest thing that, you know, and it meets the requirements even when we're doing a variant. So future purposes, let's say the traffic volume does increase more than we thought that it might be. I guess what does, what do the citizens have to do to like to say they want to construct, since it's only stop signs, street lights, things of that nature? Are there remedies that can happen that the citizens have future-wise?
So a stoplight can be requested if the intersection meets the threshold. I will be real honest in with the current, even the current traffic on Water Street. While there are definitely peak times that it is busier, I do not believe that the traffic will be so great to warrant a signal at these additional cross streets in my lifetime. So it would, we would have to have all of the vacant land developed out with additional Dollar Generals and other businesses to probably start warranting additional stoplights or stoplights.
Thank you.
I don't have any further, just, all right. Do I, do I have any, any motions or actions?
I'll move to approve this variance.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the variance by Cynthia Staley. Do I, as, as written, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. David Brown. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Variance passes. All right. And our next item is a variance request for the country subdivision.
The subject property is located northeast of the intersection of US Highway 87 South and FM 20, 2615. It is approximately a total of 34.15 acres. The property owner is proposing to re-sub, oh, sorry. The property owner is proposing to subdivide the property into four lots. Three rural, single-family commercial lots and one agricultural lot. Currently, there are three existing homes where they are proposing to do the Lots 1, 2, and 3. So if you kind of see where they cut out there. The Lots 1, 2, and 3 all have a total acreage of just over one acre. With the new UDO passing and going into effect June 1st, we have increased the rule lots to 1.5. So had they done this just before, they wouldn't have needed this variance. So it's kind of come into that constraint. Staff is proposing to approve the variance, determining it would not be detrimental to the surrounding lots as Lots 1, 2, and 3 would potentially have met the previous code. We've also discussed it with the Victoria County Engineering Department and Health Department to review the plat. They are not seeing any objections to the variance being approved as well. So staff would recommend the final approval of the plat, conditioned upon the variance.
All right. Any questions? I'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward at this time. Please limit yourself to three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joyce Gray. We own the property right next to 483, which would be probably this one right here.
Oh, we can't see what she's pointing.
Can you put the aerial back?
Put the aerial back up.
Right. So I was just wondering, is the variance for just the three residential lots? Or is there going to be a subdivision put in behind us?
No, it's for the three lots that you see on, it's for that subdivision, that configuration that you see on that plat.
Because the letter that I got that says that there's going to be a proposed development. So I'm just wondering, is there a development that's going to go in behind us?
Those three lots are considered a development. And creating one lot is considered a development. So what you see there is what is proposed to happen, those three lots.
I can give a little bit of background to this. So originally, they had done. So originally, they had done an illegal subdivision by meets and bounds for those lots one, two, and three in order not to have to do four separate plats, which would be, because technically, the big agricultural lot in the back didn't require a plat. But instead of having to pay for four separate plats, we suggested that they did the plat as a combined one, since it wasn't an illegal subdivision by meets and bounds, to do the replat and bring everything into compliance with the big lot. Because essentially, lots one, two, and three came out of the big agricultural lot. But the agricultural lot is, that's why they're still saying agriculture. They're not planning a development at this time. It's just so they didn't have to do three separate plats.
Where are your commercial lots that you were talking about?
There are no commercial lots in here. So...
So the variance is for what then? Those one, two, three?
Yes.
And nothing else?
And nothing else. So the reason lots one, two, and three need a variance now is because they're only one acre versus one and a half.
Correct. But when it was surveyed off, it came all the way to right here.
Because this portion, if, let me show you on aerial. The reason it is surveyed off right here is because this one hadn't been done by meets and bounds technically. So this lot was part of all this as considered one big tract. So now they're surveying this portion off to give this as lot three, and then this all is lot four as agricultural.
All of lot four will be agriculture and will stay that way. There's no...
As of now, that's what we have, yes. So if they were going to ever...
To do a proposed development.
Any further development for lot four, that would require a whole nother subdivision plat to be done.
But not necessarily.
If they broke it up.
But not necessarily. If the plat met all of the ordinances, it would not necessarily require public notice.
Correct. If they were going to go to the acre and a half and not just one acre, that would be perfectly fine. But right now it's going to stay in ag, correct?
Yes. As of right now, it is proposed to stay agricultural.
So the variance would be just for this one, two, and three lots?
Yes, ma'am.
Conditions out there are not really changing. It's so that the three lots that were subdivided by meets and bounds can get, you know, loans and title clearance and permits for septic, but they've effectively already been subdivided.
As long as I understand, it's just those three lots and not the whole total?
We'll, 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 what we're going to approve, if we approve it, is going to be, we're going to approve a variance that they can have those three lots, three residential lots for less than what the, what the new UDO, it's an acre and a half, but these aren't an acre and a half.
Correct.
So that's why we're going to approve the variance. And that 32 acres is going to be agriculture. They're going to, if there's going to be any kind of development, they'll have to go through the system.
Will the 32 acres get a new address instead of the 483?
So this one will not get an address until they have applied for a driveway permit. As of right now, there is not a driveway permit. Golden Crescent Regional Planning assigns addresses to the lot, so until they apply for that, this will not have an address just yet. That's going to be given by Golden Crescent.
Okay, so it'll still be just this legal, legal description?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. That's, anyone else who'd like to talk? All right, I got somebody coming. I don't know. Y'all leaving? Oh, yeah, no, no, it's fine. Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this variance request. We'll go ahead and any further discussion by, by our team here?
I just want...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We got this so-called official letter. Is there any way that you could, we would get notified exactly what was said and done here today? I know some of my other neighbors are kind of concerned about the property behind us.
This, this video will be posted on the city's website, and then this is just a recommendation body for the variances, and it will ultimately go to city council. But next month in the planning commission packet, the minutes of this meeting will also be posted in that.
Okay.
All right, so any, any further discussion? If not, do I have, do I have, ask for a motion or action?
I just wanted to say I was naming for the clarification. I thank you guys for the clarification aspect.
Motion to approve? Okay, I have a motion on the, on the table to approve the variance as stated by Mr. Vic Mendoza. I have a second, Dr. Derek Hunt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same time. Motion passes. All right, thank you. All right. Next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda, which are the minutes to the June 20th, 24th meeting, and the final plat of the original townsite REED subdivision number 101, and the final plat for the county subdivision that we just got through approving. Any discussion, any motions?
Motion to accept.
Okay, I have a motion to accept by Dr. Derek Hunt.
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Brian O'Gain. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda passes. All right. Now we're ready for the other business.
So on the monthly permit report, we processed 187 permits this month in comparison to last year at 178. We processed 162 ME permit, MEP permits, which was less than last year at our 175. We collected a total of $48,623 in permit fees, which was a little bit less than last year at $58,250. This past month, we had three minor plots, two major plots, nine site planned, three site plan modifications. Any questions?
It looks like it's picking up a little bit or getting...
We've been busy.
Again, if you look over the year-over-year, the, you know, single-family residential continues to be very low. It's probably the lowest it's been in my tenure here. But commercial, on the other hand, is doing really well. And if you look at the commercial for the year, you know, there's some huge outliers. It's a big number, and you, there is the public buildings with VC and the public safety, but even taking those out, the commercial numbers still are very healthy.
Good. All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and, next thing is items from the planning commissioners.
Nothing for me.
Anybody? Nobody? Good meeting today? If seen there's no other business, I will adjourn this meeting at 5:50. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.